Our next item is approval of the agenda. Need a motion?
No move.
Second?
A motion by Bill and seconded by Sarah Brink to approve the agenda, any additions or corrections. Not all call for the vote. And that is approved. Next item, school board recognition month.
So there's been a change this year, school board recognition month, it's been in February, I think, every, for every year as far as I can remember. Um, they've changed it September now, so we just want to recognize our school board this month. Thank you guys for all that you do in supporting our schools. So we have a little video that we're going to share that Amy has put together for you. And then there were some cookies and some cards at your spots. Thank you, board members, for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the public forum, anybody from the public want to approach the board? Saying no one. We'll move on to our presentation instructional strategies. Welcome ladies.
I just have to turn the clicker on. Turn it on.
When is your special day Amanda?
It's been awhile since I've done tech, so.
Okay.
Alright. Are we good?
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so Darcy and I are here tonight to talk about instructional strategies. We just want to start briefly by just saying instructional strategies are really those methods and techniques that we use to help our students learn. We talk oftentimes about interventions, um, what students need, and, and so we want to also understand the tiers when we're talking about instructional strategies. Tier one is where we're really focusing on all of our students and, and we're looking at the core instruction with that, that's in math, language, science, social, all subject areas. Then when we have students that maybe struggle a little bit more with that, we have specific strategies that we then work on in the tier two level, which oftentimes is done in a small group. And then the third level is where they might need even more individualized instruction, so it's kind of our top tier where we're talking about interventions for students. Um, and we, we have strategies that can be focused for that level. These are learning activities that really help students learn the content and the standards of what we're trying to teach. Teacher centered versus learner centered, we talk a lot about different types of strategies. We could go down a rabbit hole of all the different types of strategies you can use in a classroom. But there oftentimes either the teacher is really centered, focused on those, we'll often see those more at that tier two, tier three level, where the learner centered is the students are taking ownership of their learning. And we see more of that and we hear more of that in the, the whole group. You might hear of like student choice, student voice activities. We really feel it's important to point out, we've had some great opportunities to learn more about instructional strategies in the district. We've gone through the new teacher center instructional coach training, um, a number of, of instructional coaches and administrators got to go through that. And we really focused on those optimal learning environments. We know the environment of the classroom is a huge factor in learning, so we talk about that when we plan our instructional strategies. And then more recently, we are going through the Ola training. And we hear, as we're going through it, we're hearing a lot about systematic and explicit instruction. And that's really where you're digging right into what the student needs and the standard at the foundational level. And so the best way for explicit instruction, as we'll talk as we go through this more, it's going to be structured, systematic and scaffolded, so it's going to build upon their previous knowledge. And then they also talk a lot about structured literacy, so the Ola's training, I was really focused on our literacy and helping students learn to read. As I mentioned, there, we could go down and talk about so many different strategies. We have the direct instruction, the teachers in the front of the classroom saying, this is how you solve this math problem. This is how you, this is how you say these sounds if you're talking to elementary students. The upper levels, it might be this is how you solve a quadratic equation. Indirect instruction is more where the, the student is maybe learning on their own and, and maybe doing some more of the guided practice. We have experimental learning, um, you'll see that probably more of our project based learning classes. We also have interactive independent learning. And then, like I said, we could talk about all sorts of things from using simulations, storytelling, scaffolding. There's a, instructional strategies is really, really big. But for tonight, we really want to focus in now on what we, what we've been doing for literacy, because literacy is, is really important, especially with our Read Act. And then we'll also tie in a little bit to math.
So I'm going to back up to this slide for just a second. So Amanda mentioned the tiers, and so really what our training this year has been about is really, really focusing on that tier one, so that all of our teachers have the skills and the knowledge to meet the needs of a majority of our kids. Because we know that we don't have the staff to just, to provide intervention for every kid. So the best bet is to make all of our teachers awesome teachers who can meet the needs of eighty to ninety percent of our students, and then intervene or provide interventions and extra support for those kids who didn't get it the first time. And so I would say that that's been a shift in education over the last maybe twenty years-ish, is the focus is really on the learner and assuring that they learn it the first time and not, I taught it and now whoever didn't learn it is going to need intervention. So instead, it's focusing on how am I going to assure that a majority of my students understand that? And because it is so vast and everybody has an opinion about what the best instructional strategies are, we've again really invested our time, energy and effort in trainings that help, again, our teachers be effective and efficient with their time. Because we can't teach you about all of this, but rather what is going to help our students learn and become proficient readers and become successful in math? So that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So, um, we had talked about structured literacy. You probably, or some of you probably remember, we've talked about literacy a number of times at our board meetings. We've also talked about that in our board reports. And so, um, previous to this, we, we used what was called balanced literacy. Um, and so without going down that rabbit hole, um, how that has changed is that structured literacy is very explicit, systematic and sequential. So what that means is that, um, you might want to call it scripted, but it's every teacher has the effective tools they need that every student is receiving that same effective instruction. There is a list of skills and prerequisites that they have, and so they build upon each other. So before we teach this skill, we need to solidify the skill. And so again, really looking at, um, building that foundation and having a solid foundation before we move forward. So, and it's also about having that cumulative practice and ongoing review, giving them plenty of opportunities to practice that skill and show that they've mastered it, so that we can again, build on that same skill. High level of student and teacher interactions, so instead of the teacher just standing in front and delivering information, assuring that it's, I do, we all do it together, and now you do it independently. So giving them that opportunity, um, to see it from the teacher, but then all of us are going to do it together, and now we want you to do that independently, independently and support you in that. Very carefully chosen examples and non-examples, um, using decodable texts. Decodable texts are texts that are at a student's level as far as the phonics skill that they're, they're working on. This would differ from probably what we learned to read with, which was probably more of a basal reader with leveled readers being like level A, B and C and like the Dick and Jane books, those types of things. So instead of teaching kids to memorize patterns, we're teaching kids to decode words. And those decodable texts are books that they can read because of the patterns that they've been exposed to and taught explicitly. Skip that one. So, um, we've talked about before that reading comprises two different things. So you look at language comprehension and the ability to decode or word recognition. So we've spent, I would say, the last two years really focusing on that word recognition and building our, um, skill set as teachers to meet the needs of students as far as word recognition and decoding. So we have been using really great reading and Hegarty for that over the last two years. And that's what we would use, like Dibbles would measure, um, that, um, those skills. And so now we know that, we now need to move to the other part of Scarborough's reading rope, which is language comprehension. So remember, we talked about decoding times. Language comprehension is how much a student is going to comprehend that they read. And so now we've been focusing on developing our skill set for language comprehension. So the last, a whole entire school year, um, our teachers have been developing what is called an interactive read aloud to develop that language comprehension, so developing backgrounds knowledge, developing vocabulary. We do get into some at our level, language structures and verbal reasoning, but really we've been honing in on what is the best instructional strategies to teach background knowledge and vocabulary? And what does that look like? I can't talk with my hands if I have this in my hand, so. So our interactive read alouds are basically, our classroom teachers have taken a book like this, and they've broke it down into, um, specific lesson plan and steps. And so this comes exactly from that Ola training and from our letters training. So it's very, um, research based as far as the, the process and procedure. So the very first thing that we do is we look at what standards can we teach with this text? So what literacy standards are we going to teach? Are there other standards that could also be more incidental? Like perhaps there's some science or social studies or SEL, social emotional standards that could also be tied into that? So again, being very purposeful and intentional as to what the goal or the purpose is for reading that text. And then what background knowledge will a student need in order to comprehend and make sense of this text? And so, um, this text, for example, is called spaghetti in a hot dog bun. Super cute little story about a girl who lives with her grandpa and she, um, her grandpa and her eat ketchup on their toast. And then the kids start to make fun of her because she doesn't eat peanut butter and jelly like everybody else does. And so it just goes through the golden rule and how you would want others to be treated and her experience and cute little story. But so much that they can get from this book. So they'll take this book and this will be a whole week full of activities and reading just from this one text. The other thing that we really focus on with these texts are the vocabulary. Next to learning how to decode, vocabulary is the next most important thing in learning how to read. And so here is why instruction, uh, vocabulary instruction is important. I'm going to give you just a second, go ahead and take a look at that. Does anybody know what it's talking about?
I'm going to ask Ann Marie.
No.
Nothing?
I don't know what a rhizome is. Nope.
I at first, so I just highlighted some words that I was like, I don't, I have no idea. And so I looked this up to see if this actually was, was a text, it is. And so notice what I've highlighted there, those are the words that we probably have a difficult time understanding or knowing what they are. Notice how little of that text is those words. Without knowing those words, you can't make sense of that paragraph. And so that's why vocabulary is so critical and essential. We need to know about ninety-eight percent of the words that we read in order to make sense of what we're reading. So that's why we really want to focus on that vocabulary piece. So through this text, we identify, um, words that are tier two words typically. So like tier one is like basic common words that you would use in spoken language. Tier two words are going to be academic vocabulary that you're probably going to see often in many different places. And then there's tier three words that are more difficult, but they're very specific domains that you would see them, so you wouldn't see them often. So we really focus on that tier two vocabulary because they're, they're high value words, they're ten dollar words, we're going to see them in multiple places. And so for this book specifically, um, different feelings, teasing, those are all words that we need to explicitly teach students what the meaning of that is. And so, um, here is an example of how that would be taught. So the word is different, we would give them the definition in terms that they can understand. We would give them an example, we would give them a non-example, and then we would give them characteristics or a picture to illustrate that vocabulary word. And then we also, um, if there is a Spanish cognate, we also add that to the vocabulary instruction as well, because we have a good number of our students who are Spanish speaking. So, um, the tier two words, the tier three words, those have all been identified in their lesson plan. Um, and they'll spend quite some time going through those words, teaching them explicitly, but then again, explaining them when they read through the, the story. They'll also identify challenging language, for example, in here it says, we all have a heart with feelings on the inside. That might be confusing to some of our kiddos. So just explaining that, um, what that means, or he looked over at them and rolled his eyes. Belly shook with laughter. So just identifying that language in the text that, um, is going to maybe be more challenging. So. And then at the very end, um, we provide some writing prompts and other activities that help solidify that knowledge. So we might, um, do an activity like this one is about diversity. So they use a white egg and a brown egg and show that we're all different on the, we might be different on the outside, but we're all the same on the inside. A writing activity might be, what is one way that you followed the golden rule at school this week? And so then they would develop a piece of writing using that writing prompt. So again, all of that, just from one text. And so our teachers have developed these interactive read alouds throughout the, throughout the whole year. And they all follow that same lesson plan and that same sequence. And then they put little stickies on here so they remember what kind of questions to ask as they go through. I think there would be someone here. Yeah, so you can see like as the teacher is reading this, then they know that there is a question that they want to follow up with. It's either about the vocabulary or explaining some of that tricky language, whatever that might be. So again, just being very purposeful, planful and intentional as we are, um, reading these books out loud. This book would last a whole entire week, some of them are maybe even a little bit longer because we would read it multiple times for different purposes. So again, that's kind of the lesson format, um, that we use. And then we are continuing each year to then review those and say, was that, you know, do we need to adjust the vocabulary? Are there other activities that would maybe be more important? What, what does that look like?
Is this through fourth grade or just?
Yeah.
Yep. Sixth grade, fourth grade?
Just fourth grade.
Fourth grade.
Through fourth grade.
And the past two years, we've kind of restructured how we've looked at math to be, um, as Darcy was mentioning too with literacy. Uh, we want to start with that, that teacher focus, but we don't want teachers teaching the whole time. There was once a time a teacher would get up from the classroom and show students, how do you add? And, you know, show them how to do everything. Um, and so really now, the past two years, we've been focusing, especially at the elementary levels, having the teachers maybe talk through the concepts for maybe ten minutes, and then really exposing those benchmarks to the students of this is what we want you to learn, the concept of adding or subtracting. And it's very direct, very explicit instruction. But then they want to, to shift over and say, okay, now as Darcy said, the I do, you do, we do concept, or we do, you do concept. Once the teacher's done with the teacher instruction, the students will start to kind of do their own independent practice with some guided practice with the teacher moving around, or in those small groups just to kind of, I know this group of students might struggle with this part of the adding, so we're going to pull them together and talk them through it. We've also really started to utilize the IXL program to help us in math. The IXL program, we've tried to find something to help us in order to take little diagnostic snapshots of students and where they're at with their math skills. And IXL allows us to do that and kind of progress monitor where students are at. And it, it really breaks down skills specific to each individual student. So as they, they do their diagnostic test, that maybe they're struggling with this part of addition. And so then the program can, um, provide above and below and at grade level opportunities for that student to practice those skills. Again, we've focused on having more small groups in the classroom, so the teachers get up, they kind of do the whole, the whole concept, the whole group lesson, and then they're really focusing on foundational supports with those small groups. Some of those things might be number talks or how to solve a, a word problem strategy. We also tie into our assurance of mastery coaches, they're going to look at our tier two and tier three students. So students that might just need a little more, um, focus, um, they're really focused on building those foundational skills. It might be number sense, um, they might use more of the number talks. We have used a couple of different models through supports for push-in, so the assurance of mastery coach might go in to the classroom, watch the whole group instruction and then work with the teacher with some small groups. Or they might pull, um, oftentimes for our higher needs, they might be a little further behind. They might pull them into a smaller group, one or two kids to really focus on, on that foundational skill. Um, and then we use the Texas Star interventions, um, to help us with that, the number sense skills. Because we're seeing, that's a really big foundation for our students, number sense is going to follow them through. If they don't have number sense, they're going to struggle in math. Again, we talk about explicit instruction and in math, explicit instruction is going to be, the teacher's going to very clearly identify, this is what we're learning today. And then they're going to try to connect that to their previous learning. I, I oftentimes think of when, when we're, um, like when I taught fifth grade math, when we would talk about adding and subtracting or multiplying multiple digits, we talk a lot about, do you remember what you did when you had one digit? So you're going to connect that to that previous learning, hoping that that, that kind of gets the kids, sparks their, um, understanding. The teachers should model it, that's part of explicit instruction. Again, opportunities for guided practice, we want the students to learn, but we still want to be there kind of holding their hand. Like first time a kid rides a bike, you're right next to them. And then it's like, okay, you're ready. You need to build the fluency and understanding, so now you're ready to do your independent practice. Um, it's really important during that modeling and practice times that they're getting questions of, why do you think this worked? How did this work? What happened? When, when does this happen? That helps the kid, the students to kind of think through the process of learning the math. And then we should have frequent opportunities for responses, whether the students are writing it, they're saying it, um, they draw it out. They found that that's very beneficial in math. And then obviously feedback, even as adults, we need feedback. So it's important that we're giving our, even our little students feedback on why that was, that worked or why it didn't. Um, and the systematic component really, it's presented in a manner that builds on concepts of scaffolding. I think Darcy used sequence, but scaffolding sequencing is the same thing. We really want to say, okay, they, they have this foundation, now let's move on. So you can see through this, math and, and reading, um, explicit instruction, there's a lot of similarities in what we're trying to do to help, help our kids learn. We should also break down complex tasks to make it more manageable, especially for our littler students. And we want to go from easy tasks to make it more difficult, so they have the foundations to move forward. And then anytime we can have supports, manipulatives, written prompts, other cues are, are huge with kids. So, one thing too, I wanted to point out, we were doing data today and Darcy said that when the Scarborough's rope was up and she said, we've really been focusing on decoding. Um, we can see that in our Dibbles data at, at Southview right now with our third and fourth graders who have been doing this for a few years. After she said that, I thought, oh, we should have talked about that and put that in here for you guys. But, um, maybe we can pull some stuff together to share with you, have Jeremy share with you. But we're seeing some great things with some of those numbers. We know we're not perfect yet, but it's, it's a start, we're starting to see that that decoding is really helping. So now that we're adding the comprehension piece, um, hopefully that wraparound will really start to see some good, good data. So, questions?
I'll give you guys a doozy of a question.
Darcy can answer it, no.
Totally more for you Amanda. So last spring, I think, we saw that, I think, was it the second graders at Southview that were, no, it might actually be for Darcy. But there was one of the, the groups, the, the grade groups at Southview that really did not improve in their reading over the year. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I think it's the first graders coming to second grade.
Yeah.
We, we did notice in that data that there's a little, we have a few more students that are needing more supports this year. We're looking at that and trying to dig into some of that. We also have had an influx of some new to country students, some newer students to Marshall with, with EL that can play into that. But we, we did notice in our data, we're seeing great things with our third and fourth grade numbers. They're a little bit lower, like our fourth grade numbers, we were really, we have work to do, but we were happy to see that we have a smaller number of kids needing to come for that level three or tier three intervention. And we're seeing that progress with their numbers. But that second grade group coming in, we know is a little bit, needs a little more support for us this year, which, um, could be for a multitude of reasons too, so. But yeah, you probably did see that in the fall on some scores.
I'm curious to know the, the growth rate by the time they're to fourth grade. Is our percentage more caught up than it used to be? We don't have that data yet.
I don't think we have that data.
We do a lot, so they graduate, going howl, to be up to level, but that K through fourth is very important.
It would be, it'd be interesting to sit down with Darcy and her instructional coach and us with our instructional coach and, and really look at some of that data more closely of those cohorts. I don't know, I, sorry, I'm new to Southview, so I don't know if we've put it in cohorts yet, like we do with like the MCA and NWA data, but that could be something we could start to look at to see and, and provide some cohort specific data.
Yeah, the Dibbles data, we just wrapped that up late last week and the NWA was not quite done yet. So as we get those, those are the pieces that are really what we're using to identify students at grade level. So that's the next work on our, on our plate.
I'd like to see that when we get it put together.
Even, even with the Dibbles data, we've, we've noticed that from the end of the year to the start of the year, we have seen some good things with some of our fourth grade groups. So, um, it would be kind of interesting to see the cohort data.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's hard too for, for Dibbles especially, sorry. So, um, Dibbles measures, um, a grade level expectation at the end of kindergarten. And so we aren't going to see in Dibbles for first grade, like they, they won't, we won't see that retention from kindergarten because what we assess then at the beginning of first grade is all of the skill set that they're going to need to be successful at first.
skillset that they're going to need to be successful at 1st grade. So it looks like, at the beginning of 1st grade, they may, they regress. It isn't that they regress, it's just a different measure. It's like, we looked at these skills at the end of kindergarten, which are the, which is the expectation, but now, the expectation is here. And so, we wouldn't expect them to show, you know what I mean, that, yeah, from the end to the beginning, so.
But we could pull data to see how many kids are exiting from some of those programs based on the DIBELS work.
I just to see how the cohorts have improved throughout the year. Time they're at 4th grade, are we at 20% of the kids improved, that are more up to par?
Yep.
That's something exciting thing with this redact too, Jeff, is the expectation is where we've always looked at, reading at grade level until 3rd grade. The expectation is now looking at reading at grade level, period, for all students. And that's data we haven't collected beyond elementary school before. We haven't done those universal screeners in the same way beyond elementary. So this will be the first year we've got it in place, well, all the way through, you know, through the 4th, and starting to look more at middle school. But in the next couple of years, we're gonna start adding more of those pieces in the secondary school too, and there's data we've never had before, so. Yeah, that'll be encouraging to see that, because I agree, that tells us a lot, is what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Nice job, guys.
Next item is a consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Sarah?
I'll second.
A motion by Sarah Runcie, and second by Anne Marie, to approve the consent agenda. I will call for the vote. That is approved. Next item, approval of the bills for August of '24. I'll need a motion.
Motion.
Thanks, Jeff.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, and seconded by Sarah Brink, to approve the bills. Any discussion? Anything, Sarah? That needs to be pointed?
Not on that one.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. It is approved. Next item is discussion item of the treasures report. Did you have some comments?
I do. So, just looking at the treasures report, I don't know if you want to pull it up, just to make it easier, scroll down to the next page. Yep, 2nd page. There you go. I don't know if you can make it bigger, it's really hard to see, but.
I can't.
Okay. Well, if you have it in front of you.
We can have it on screen.
Obviously, the revenues look in line, if we're looking at our numbers through August in that first column. But if you scroll down and look at the first column of expenditures through August for 2024-25, I promise you, we have not spent our entire budget for the year. So, I was quickly texting Leanna, and I will just say that our auditor's in the office last week, all week, and so, yeah, she must've pulled the wrong data into that line. So, those expenditures through August are not correct. If you want to handle that, she did say that she can resend that data out via email, if you'd like.
This one's just an info item, so it's correct, and shared out with the board.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sounds good.
All right, moving on. Board reports or updates. Anybody have any reports?
Share the exec committee that just met prior to this, so we'll have an update on that, probably in the future, we're gonna have one ready right now.
Move on to your reports, Jeremy.
Yeah. It's a lot of things, just the start of the year, getting going. In my report, I just start off, I share a little bit about just the start of the year. We had new teachers here, August 20th through 22nd, for some introductions to school. Annual Workshop Week training took place that following week. Our district-wide training this year was the One District Many Voices. We talked about diversity, and had conversations about how to support students and learners, meeting them where they at, as we worked towards our mission of educating, supporting, and preparing all learners for success. That's part of the presentation today, was just hearing a little bit how we do that, how we're trying to meet those diverse students by looking at the individual needs of everybody. I also want to share that we do have an ongoing need for substitutes in all of the areas. We're offering a substitute information session on September 24th, so next week, from 3:30 until 4:30, here in this room. Be an opportunity for anyone who wants to learn more about subbing in the district, they can meet with our HR staff and talk about whatever questions they have, what it might look like. We hire subs in teaching, paras, administrative assistance positions, just daily, a lot of different needs, and a lot of opportunities for people who are interested in some of that work with the school districts, so I encourage people to come to that. Parkside and Early Childhood, they share that 1st grade students had the first week, kind of alone in the building, because kindergarten and early childhood is a first week of doing some orientation things. But 1st graders visited classrooms, got to know teachers, and just got familiar with the school. That went really well. And then, kindergarten and early childhood had the first week, meeting with students and families, getting information, just ensuring they had that smooth, successful start to the school year. For those younger students, a lot of them, it's their first experience in a school setting, so the assessment days help teachers get a chance to get to know each parent, and each family, and each student in a unique, in a unique way, their social, emotional needs. Beth and I start each year visiting each of the schools, and just kind of experiencing that welcome in the school. We have learned, we don't go to Parkside the first couple days, so 6-year-olds and 5-year-olds coming in, it's a little scary, then you get extra adults there. We went this morning, and it's just awesome to stand there and watch those smiling faces come in, the high fives, and the teachers are familiar with, obviously, getting hugs and all those kind of things. That's a lot of fun, seeing those kids come in, and just enjoying coming into school. Early childhood family education classes, I do want to share, those will be starting soon. We have classes available on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and we do have a few spots still available. So if anyone's listening and is interested in an early childhood family ed class, reach out to Marshall Community Services, and the contact for the information is in Tiffany's report. Southview Elementary, they share they have about 540 students in the building this year. They brought them in on that first day of school. The women's soccer team from SMSU is there. That's a fun experience too. They line up by the front door, and cheer, and hoop and holler and stuff as the students come in, so a lot of fun, a lot of excitement for them coming in that day, as the 3rd and 4th graders walk through the tunnel, and the 2nd graders as well, coming in and just welcoming the school for the first day. It's a lot of fun environment for them. Pete shares their focus this year is around whole-school implementation of the U-time activities. That's part of the bar program. Those activities are designed for teachers to get to know students at a deeper level, and just getting, trying to get to a point where students are comfortable going to teachers with any concerns they have. It's part of that getting to know each child and helping to meet all those needs. He also shares that they completed the Fall DIBELS assessments, the sweep team, so they have instructional coach titles, teachers, and EL teachers, they call them their sweep team, they go through and do that testing for the whole building, then we have consistency in practice, and consistent scores for students there. NWA testing is also going, so those assessment results and such will be something that we share with you at a later meeting. Middle School shares, they had a fantastic beginning to the school year. They had 625 students come to the open house picture day on Tuesday, the 3rd, and then they started on the Wednesday as well. Looking ahead, they note a few things coming up, including NWA testing, that started on the week of September 9th. NWA math testing is starting this week, and bus safety training is going on this week, as well as they had their first building-wide fire drill today, and that went well at that site too. High School, they start the first day with link crew, they're meeting with, excuse me, transition for the 9th grade students. Junior and senior students serve as link leaders, and they just do an outstanding job welcoming students, and it's a nice transition, the freshmen get a, get most of the day when they don't have the upperclassmen there, and they get to walk through, and just kind of learn how the high school works. So it's been a really, a really nice start to the school year, and Brian shares a thank you with you guys for allowing that schedule for that first day. Also shares that we are starting the year off with having guided study time at the high school, for freshmen and sophomores. It's just transitioning into that first semesters of class. So for 30 minutes of the hour-long lunch, they have guided study time that is required for them, and then the second 30 minutes, they get the lunch, and then after we get going with the year, then we cut that back, and they get the hour-long lunch, like others or two, but it's extra time to show them how that time works, and have some extra one-on-one time with some staff. Last week, we also were notified that 3 of our high school students have advanced to the semifinalist round of the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Competition. Senior students Ryan Botzford, Carter Gurkey, and Jack Gunn, we were notified of that on Wednesday, September 11th. So the students, along with 16,000 other students around the United States, are competing in the 70th Annual National Merit Scholar Program. So that's a big deal, 3 of our students recognize that program, so very proud of them, and want to make sure we call attention to that. Brian also shares that homecoming is taking place next week, September 23rd through 27th. A number of different things taking place that week at the school, different events happening. Couple to highlight are the Student Council coronation will take place during the school day. We've done that for the last couple of years, that's really been nice, and all of the kids get to be part of the coronation piece at the high school, and there is a homecoming dance scheduled for next Friday night. At the ALC, Dan shares, and with CTI, he shares, "The move is complete, school's up and running." Just a few minor things left for construction, that final checklist was getting things wrapped up as school started, we're getting through those things, but nothing serious there, it's going very well. Very fun to get students in there, walking in the building there, with walls and doors, it just, it's a great feeling, walking through that building as things are running there. Students have commented how it feels so much more like it's a school, and that they're very appreciative of the school, so thank you to school board for supporting that project. Dan also shares that CTI classes are up and running. CTE has started the Safety and Introductory Unit, so I'm not running a lot of the power tools just yet, but getting the safety pieces in place before we get to some of that, so it's an important start to that, and things are going well there. And also, the CTE program certification is in process for this year, so that approval is due by November 1st, so all of our CTE teachers are going through their programming, getting recertified for all of those, it's just part of the recurring process with CTE classes. With activities, Mitch shares that we saw a 2% increase in registrations compared to last fall, and we have 451 students completed, who completed that process this fall, so that's a nice increase. He also shares that Big South scheduling, the Big South Athletic Directors are finalizing schedules for next year's fall and winter seasons. Because of the conference realignment, all the programs are gonna have some changes in their matchups this year. ADs are prioritizing school attendance with planning the schedules, so there could be some increased travel impacting some programs because of the changes of those matchups, but those will be coming out soon. He also shares that Coach and Speech, Coach Van Coolen was honored by the National Speech and Debate Association for leading a program into the prestigious 100 Club, which recognizes excellence in leadership, competition, and service activities. So congratulations to Donna. With Soccer, Coach Matt Versabel earned his first career win against Worthington recently. The girls currently hold a 2-5 record for the season, or they did when we got this report. New activities, our new department initiatives, he shares that Amber Gorder has taken on some additional responsibilities with her new role in that position, including revamping some graphics in the video boards, and things that needed some attention. Also explored some new platforms for rosters and programs, just to better recognize booster Going on to Director of Teaching and Learning, he shares, or she shares, that it's just great to see students back for the back-to-school piece. She also talks about the diversity workshop, we had the Pillsbury House Theater here, just we had a lot of feedback from staff, and that was, they felt the information shared in the breakout was very valuable. She also shares, "We have strong partnership ongoing with SMSU, with over 200 placements in classrooms this year." So that gives pre-service teachers opportunity to work with our staff, and seeing firsthand what it's like to be a teacher. It's good for our students to get connections with SMSU students, and of course, good for them to get some connections with us. Excited to be partnering with the City of Marshall's Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission to host Welcome Week activities. That's tomorrow, September 17th, from 5 until 7, at Justice Park. The goal of the event is to celebrate diversity, advance inclusion, and bring people together. There'll be inflatables, activities, some free food from 3 different vendors, and a dunk tank. So I'm encouraged for board members, if you're free tomorrow evening, stop by, anytime during that time.
Are you gonna be in the dunk tank?
I am not doing the dunk tank, no. No.
There would be more incentive to go!
Right. Hayden McKittrick, our Assistant Principal High School, he is gonna be in the dunk tank, and one of her EL teachers in high school I know is in it, I'm not sure who else they've got, but they've got a police officer, I think, that's doing it at some point, so variety of different people, but be a fun activity. And it looks like it's gonna be beautiful weather tomorrow afternoon, too. With Special Ed programs, she shares that we have 3 new administrators on board this fall, so she's doing some special training sessions, just helping orient them with Section 504 regulations, and get on board with that, showing them how all of that works, and walking them through interactions and the documentation pieces of that. She also shares, "We have 5 new special ed teachers, with 1 new speech-language pathologist in the district this year." Really a great group, she's excited working with them, and feel like that's going really well so far. Mary Kay's report, she shares a parent committee for the American Indian group, has begun annual plans and goals, that's part of using the funds for the American Indian support. We support and guide that committee, so Mary Kay serves on that, aligning with our district goals, and the world's most workforce, and achievement integration plans. 2 of the committee members from the APAC Group, Michelle Knife Sterner and Rhian Danny Jones, presented during our Workshop Week at the American Culture Session for staff, and that was very well received, they shared a lot of good information with our staff. She also shares a district crisis committee, has been working on a number of different things. They've updated the manuals for this year, looking at some updates with incident command, crisis plan overview, and lockdown procedures. Each admin assistant helped get those crisis kits and such out to everybody, so thank you to the crisis team for their work on that. Tricia shares in her report, offering our, just update that staffing levels are nearly complete, majority of our key positions are filled, we have a few remaining vacancies, I think we have 3 para positions still open in the district, that we are actively working to fill, and just continue to recruit for those spots. So just encourage you to help spread the word for those pieces, and thank you to the principals, HR department, payroll, getting all of those people set up in our system. She also shares that this marks the second year of free breakfast and lunches for students. Each student in our district can receive, or the whole state, receives 1 free breakfast and 1 free lunch every day. It's a great benefit for students and families, and we encourage families still to complete the application for educational benefits. We used to call it the Free and Reduced Application, the families still get some other benefits, such as potential discounts on related school fees and activities by completing that form, and it helps the district have accurate information on file of all of our families. Finally, in Sarah's, I think finally, in Sarah's report, she's finishing up the school finance training series with Southwest Service Co., but part of her orientation, her new role, last session is next week on the 24th. She has finalized setting up building budgets for all the administrators, and shared those with them, and then plans to send monthly updates to each of the buildings there to help them stay current with the building budgets. She shares that the audit team for Hoffman and Robst was in our office last week, so it was a busy week going through the audit. And finally, she shares that workers' comp policy renews on October 1st each year. Our Experience Modification Factor has decreased again this year, and resulted in a reduction in annual premiums of over $95,000 from last year to this year. So the premiums are based on a number of different pieces, but that $95,000 savings will certainly have a big impact on our budget. And I believe we actually budgeted for about $100,000 increase, so that's about a $200,000 impact to the budget to our goods, so.
Nice.